Good evening, everyone. It is a packed house. Thank you for being here. We are at our regular council meeting for October 2nd, 2018. It is 6 o'clock. Can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Didball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Here.
Thank you. We are going to have the invocation led by Councilmember Buckland and Pledge of Allegiance Nice tonight will be led by Council or Vice Mayor Harris, please.
If you'll bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance and a clear vision so the efforts of staff and council will be of a benefit to those that live and work in this community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Somebody's phone's on. Yeah. Let's make sure everybody's phones are off. All right. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations and proclamations. We have our first presentation by Dan Turner, Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. There we go. Come on up, Dan.
How are you?
Doing excellent yourself.
Great.
Well, thank you so much for being here.
Well, thank you.
All right. We have a proclamation and we have somebody joining you.
Yes, this is one of my students.
Hi.
My name is Aaron Schipelhuth.
Hi, Aaron. Thank you. All right. We have a proclamation for you here. I would like to welcome Dan Turner, welding professor at Uba College, to accept this proclamation tonight. Manufacturing Day is celebrated on the first Friday of the month in October. Manufacturers provided over 35,000 jobs for the Sacramento region and 12,480,000 jobs nationwide. Manufacturing is the most important industry in the United States, contributing to $2.2 trillion in our economy. The average manufacturing worker in the United States earns $82,023 annually, including pay and benefits. Manufacturers in educational systems such as Uba Community College and to mention some of our local manufacturers such as SunSuite, Chipco Manufacturing Company, Kingsbury, Nelson, Amcor California, Industrial Rubber, Baked Industries, and OMC. What's OMC for?
Orchard Machinery Corporation.
Okay. The City of Uba City appreciates all manufacturers and commend them for the commitment to the betterment of the City of Uba City. Now therefore, be it resolved by I, Preet Didball, Mayor of City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month in the City of Uba City done this day, the second day of October 2018.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say?
Sure. First of all, thank you so much for coming here tonight and thank you so much for this proclamation. I think that teaching welding, manufacturing, fabrication is a calling and it's just a wonderful thing to see the students come through and learn a lifelong skill that they'll use to help better the community by earning a livable wage, buying houses, investing money in the community. And I think that when you have a manufacturing-style economy, it's a very strong economy. And I see more and more every day coming this way. So, thank you guys very much.
Don't say anything? Sure.
And I was told in motion that I'm supposed to invite you guys out for a tour. And if any of the manufacturers want to sit on our advisory committee meeting, we are having our meeting in November. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Congratulations.
A little token of our appreciation.
Awesome. Thank you.
I would like to make a little comment here. One of my sons actually went through the welding and manufacturing program CNC machines in Uba College. And he went into the Air Force. And he's in charge of a big shop somewhere now in Tampa Bay for the military, the Air Force. And he gets to weld on exotic metals and all kinds of different things. And so, it's also something that they use in the military for many different things for their shops too there. But that's a career that actually touches my family. So, it's fantastic. Thank you.
Hi, Marcia. Hi, Marcia. Good to see you again. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. We have a proclamation here for you. This is Bringing Awareness to Domestic Violence, Honoring October 2018. I would like to welcome Marcia Cross-Taylor, Executive Director for Casa Esperanza, to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and abuse. It leaves an imprint of fear and hostility for the abused in our community. The problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cross all society as a whole. Adults and children are victims of violence every year. In our quest to impose sanctions on those who break the law by perpetuating violence, we must also meet the needs of the victims of domestic violence and their children, who often suffer grave financial, physical, and psychological losses. Now therefore, be it resolved in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs in cooperation with Casa de Esperanza. I, Preet Didball, Mayor of City of Uba City, and on entire behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together in our community through prevention, intervention, and educational programs to eliminate domestic violence and become a violence-free community. Done today, on the second day of October 2018. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Want to really appreciate the fact that we have been a partner with the City of Uba City for 42 years now. In 1977, when we opened our shelter and counseling facility here, we were the second one in the state of California and the 11th one in the whole United States. I think that says an awful lot for a small rural northern California community who looked at what it was like for one in four women in our community. One in four women will be a victim of domestic violence at some point in her life. As well as that, we know that it's also going to affect adult men. And we know that most of those adults, whether woman or man, is going to have children with them. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is our opportunity to take a look and tell the victims and survivors that we work with that this community supports them. And to that end, I really appreciate the City of Uba City for helping us. Casa, as you are aware, had a fire in 2016. And since that time, we have been very much honored by the way our community has stepped up to help us and to help those women and children who are being serviced. We serve about 1,000 women and children a year. And additional to that, we serve about 15 to 20 men who need sheltering, as well as men in our counseling roles. We thank you. We hope that you remember throughout this month, those people who are escaping violence in their home, who are relying on our community to show them that we are a community who will not tolerate violence, not in our homes, not in our streets. Thank you.
I believe we're going to have Chief come up now.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity tonight to honor the officers and the dispatchers for a very heroic night. Everybody had the opportunity to see what happened to Sacramento County Deputy Sheriff this past year or this past week with Deputy Mark Stuziak from Branch Cordova PD. And but for the grace of God, on the evening that we're going to talk about tonight, we could have lost one of our officers. So, I appreciate the time tonight to speak to this. Before I get to that, though, I wanted to congratulate Officer Souls and Officer Gibson for winning the Western State Police K-9 Association Team of the Year. So, the events, it's not real timely. It happened a while ago. But law enforcement, because of litigious things, we sometimes aren't able to honor and celebrate the officers for their events that happened that evening. So, it's a little bit not timely, but it's the soonest that we could do it. And it's very important that we do it in front of a group of people, the citizens who are here every day to protect and serve. So, with that, Commander Tappy is going to read the award. And Assistant Chief Garcia and I will be handing out the awards. So, thank you.
Good evening. On April 22nd, 2017, at approximately 1:30 a.m., Officers Martin and Singh arrived at the O'Connell Lodge Inn at 7:30 North Palora Avenue to conduct a security check due to an increased level of criminal activity in the area. Officers Martin and Singh saw an adult male subject in the parking lot who was leaning into the open passenger-side window of a vehicle. The officer suspected he was burglarizing the vehicle. The officers contacted the suspect who fled on foot. Officers Martin and Singh chased after him as he ran through the parking lot. The subject tripped and fell to the ground. Officers Martin and Singh pinned the suspect to the ground and attempted to handcuff him. The suspect resisted the officers' attempts to physically control or handcuff him and held his hands beneath his body. Officers Santana and Mulcahy arrived to assist Officers Martin and Singh as they worked to take the suspect into custody. The suspect arched his back and quickly removed his right hand in which he was grasping a handgun. The suspect fired the handgun, shooting Officer Martin in the left leg. Officer Martin grabbed the suspect's right hand as he continued to grasp the handgun and pinned the suspect's hand to the ground, preventing him from firing another shot. The suspect refused to release the handgun and kept his finger on the trigger as the officers ordered him multiple times to remove his finger from the trigger and release the handgun. The suspect posed an imminent danger to anyone in the vicinity. Recognizing this immediate and imminent deadly threat, the officers made the appropriate decision using deadly force in order to prevent serious injury or death to the officers or those in the immediate area. The suspect was handcuffed and his firearm secured. Officer Mulcahy immediately began providing first aid to Officer Martin as Officers Thornton and Jensen arrived on scene. Officer Mulcahy applied a tourniquet to Officer Martin's left leg and with the assistance of Officer Thornton, provided care to Officer Martin as fire and medical units were being dispatched. Officer Jensen began securing the scene and initiated a crime scene log. Sergeant Morazinski arrived and immediately assessed the condition of the officers and the suspect and effectively prioritized action as he assumed command of the scene. Officer Stout provided assistance at the scene in searching for witnesses. Public Safety Dispatchers Carrie Frazier and Holly Taylor worked effectively to coordinate all communications surrounding this event, including the response of personnel from surrounding agencies and a lifelight ambulance. Dispatchers Frazier and Taylor also assisted with calling out additional personnel required for this incident, as well as handling the continuing unrelated calls coming into the dispatch center. All of the personnel involved in this incident remained focused, held their composure, and worked effectively, both individually and as a team, during a very stressful situation. Their actions are in keeping with the highest standards of law enforcement and bring great credit to themselves and the City of Uba City Police Department. Based on the events of that night and the actions described above, it is hereby ordered the members of the department involved in this incident will be recognized as follows. Could I have the members involved, please, step forward? Sergeant Nick Morazinski, Officer Jared Thornton, Officer Drew Jensen, Officer Michael Stout, Public Safety Dispatcher 3, Carrie Frazier, and Public Safety Dispatcher 2, Holly Taylor, please step forward. You will receive the department's police unit commendation ribbon for your actions related to this incident. Thank you. Officer Melina Mulcahy, please step forward. Officer Melina Mulcahy will receive the department's Life Saving Medal for her actions in treating and stabilizing Officer Brandon Martin after he sustained a life-threatening injury. Thank you. Detective David Santana, Officer Brandon Martin, Detective Chern, Preet Singh, and Officer Melina Mulcahy, please step forward. You will receive the department's Meritorious Service Medal for your actions in contacting and containing the suspect and stopping the imminent threat he posed. Officer Brandon Martin was previously awarded the department's Purple Heart Award for injuries he sustained during this incident. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank everybody. You guys did a tremendous job. We're extremely proud of you. And thank you, everybody, from the Police Department and from everywhere that showed up. But again, one thing we didn't emphasize enough is that we definitely appreciate our fire department compadres. So, thank you.
It's going to clear out now. Now.
Now you really stand out.
All right. Now the room cleared out. I have to say, they make our community proud, that's for sure. Next, we have the Uba-Sutter-Culsa United Way Campaign. We have Ryan Graham, who's going to do a presentation. Yeah. Go ahead and go up to the podium.
Members, men and women in blue, thank you. Have a little presentation here. Given the thickness of the agenda, I'll try and redact it and keep comments impactful. Hello, Uba City, councilmembers. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Ryan Graham. I am campaign chair for the Uba-Sutter-Culsa United Way. And we really greatly appreciate the opportunity afforded us to speak today about service, I think, community service, volunteerism in our community, and a little bit about what the Uba-Sutter-Culsa United Way does. I really feel truly that we serve in a company of heroes. And I think as public servants, we can appreciate, you above most can appreciate the impact that volunteerism has in our community in ensuring that we have a vibrant and successful, oh, hey, successful community. Taking a step back a little bit, I think it's helpful to maybe talk quickly about volunteerism. And there's been some, oh, thank you. Oh, cool. And there's been a couple of studies that were recently published in 2017, last year, by John Hopkins and Deloitte Workplace Study. And this makes sense. This stuff is obvious, especially to those committed to our community, that volunteering builds a strong, safe, cohesive community, that it strengthens social connections, enhances civic engagement, and volunteering encourages goal-sharing within the workplace. So, to that end, volunteering, I think encouraging spirit of volunteerism within a workplace in any organization, such as employees of Uba City, that have, they believe that companies that sponsor and promote volunteerism do better on all types of metrics within these studies. So, what is the United Way? I think the United Way, for me, is committed to creating long-lasting changes with measurable improvements within our community. And we try and provide direct, one-stop access to programs doing the greatest good within our community. And how do we do this? It's through an active board. Tony is on our board and he's on the Senior Commission. So, he's waiting to make some comments for the Senior Commission and I'll try and keep my comments brief. We have a highly engaged staff and a phenomenal stable of 30 partnership agencies that provide, that's what makes the difference with the United Way. And our volunteers create a better change for Uba City. Our strategic commitments include, we attempt to enhance education opportunities, enhance income, and improve the health of our residents. And how do we do that? Our current priorities for 2018, 2019 are combating homelessness, providing healthier children, and an atmosphere, and the aging population, assisting our aging population. The Uba-Sutter-Culsa United Way is changing lives. We impact 15,500 lives a month within Uba City. And each one of those people have a unique story to tell. And so, this is an invitation to engage. If you can't volunteer, then we encourage you to give. We have a giving in the workplace, our Employee Contribution Campaign. The beauty of this right now is that Uba City has already signed up. And we have electronic forms available. And we try and make a pain-free process. And 100% of the contributions go to programs right here at home. And just $5 a week has a great impact on our ability to expand services. We will be at the Resource Fair, the Employee Resource Fair, next week and can answer any questions. And just again, thank you to this council and to the City of Uba City, to employees for your support over the years. This is our 50th year operating in the Uba-Sutter-Culsa region. So, we can't do it without you. And thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity. And if there are any questions, we'll see you next week. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a Senior Commission Report. Hi.
Hi. Hi, I'm Tana Thomas, Chair of the Uba City Senior Commission. And let's see how we go about doing this. This is a little different, but we'll do it. As I said, my name is Tana Thomas. I'm Chair of the Uba City Senior Commission. Additionally, here in the room, two other commissioners, Vice Chair, Tony Curlin, Tony, and Commissioner John Boyer, yawning, John. An additional commissioner, who I don't see in the room, Joanne Ellis. And our recreation staff representative, Jessica Chesey, also did the slide presentation. I appreciate her help. I'm going to try to read this, but it's way over there and I, my glasses, I'm not sure. But I think it's really important. Oh, thank you so much. I think it's really important, and especially for those that might not be able to see this, what the Senior Commission Mission and Purpose Statement. And primarily, all commissioners, the senior commission, we are all appointed by the City Council. And we serve at their leisure. Our main purpose as a senior commission is to act in advisory capacity to the council on matters pertaining to seniors' needs and desires. The commission shall act as advocates for senior needs. The commission shall advise the city council on general policies and issues such as transportation, nutrition, housing, health, safety, and other senior services, including programs at the senior center. The commission shall help facilitate partnerships with organizations that affect senior services and work together with city staff to ensure programs and services continue to meet the needs of our seniors. And I know most of you are pretty well aware of the growing senior population. The baby boomers are now moving into what they call the Silver Tsunami. So, the senior needs are increasing, the senior population is increasing. Oops. We went blank. That's not helpful. Oh, good. Thank you. Obviously, I'm technol, I shouldn't be. I used to work at Uba College and do technology, but that's been a while. Our senior commissioners are very active. And as was mentioned about volunteering, since we are basically retirees, we do a lot of volunteering. Myself, I serve on the Agency on Aging Area 4 Advisory Council. I also serve on the Sutter County Commission on Aging. And I'll talk a little bit more about the Agency on Aging Area 4 because of a survey that's going around and hopefully you've seen. Our Vice Chair, Tony Curlin, I understand is involved with the United Way. I heard that just a minute ago. He's also involved on Sutter County Museum, with the Sutter County Museum Association. He attends the Uba-Sutter Interagency Council and Regional Housing Authority meetings. And basically, we attend those kinds of things to keep our eyes and ears open on what's going on in the community as far as senior needs and what kinds of things we might be, need to be aware of as far as senior services. Our missing Commissioner, Joanne Ellis, is CEO of the Uba-Sutter Food Bank. And she's also involved with the nutrition program for seniors 60-plus. And John Boyer, another commissioner, is extremely active at the senior center and volunteers calling bingo, among many other things, at the senior center. I've heard him referred to as Mr. Bingo. Oops, I did it again. I don't know what I'm doing. Bingo. Oops, I did it again. I don't know what I'm doing. I think it's a fat finger thing. So, one of the things that we decided to do as a senior commission, in talking about what kinds of things could we do in our role as advocating for seniors, we decided we needed to be more visible. We felt like not a lot of seniors in our community were aware that Yuba City had a senior commission. And so, one of the things we wanted to do as a goal for ourselves is to be more visible. So, as you can see, one of the things we did was attend and sit at the United Way Resource Fair, and sit, John and I sat at a table greeting people and talking to people. Tony was involved as well, but he was involved as a United Way volunteer, and he was walking around and giving directions. That was very beneficial, to be able to talk to folks. We also handed out some of the Parks and Rec, the latest catalog about activities going on. So, that was really a good thing. Okay, we're going to try one more time. Ah, did it. Our work plan for this year, besides being more visible, also, our ranks were getting a little thin, so we were looking at ways to recruit new and diverse commissioners, so that we could represent various aspects of the commission. I believe there is a fifth commissioner that's coming on board, and we should have a full slate very shortly. I want to mention, hopefully you saw in the Appeal Democrat, it was included in the Appeal Democrat, not this past Sunday, but the Sunday before, this is a survey. And the Area Four Agency on Aging, which in our local seven-county area, basically disperses the Older Americans Act dollars. And there is a, we partnered, the agency partnered with AARP to do, conduct a survey. The state, the federal department requires a survey conducted for senior opinions, I believe it's every four years, to do a survey and find out about the needs, and are we headed in the right direction. This was included in the Appeal Democrat, and it was a little confusing for some people, unfortunately, because it kind of came with all the rest of the ads, and some folks kind of shoveled it off with the rest of the ads if they weren't interested. Actually, if you opened it up, there was a survey inside. If you're interested, you don't have to be a senior to fill out this survey. It applies Yuba and Sutter County, even though I'm just talking about Yuba City right now. The area survey is appropriate for both counties. You can do it online, and I just read the website. It is, if you're interested in doing it, and you don't have to be a senior, they're interested in everybody's opinion about a senior-friendly community, www.agencyonagingfor.org. And you can actually do it electronically, so I would encourage you to do that. The senior center is also conducting a survey, I believe it's just going out, talking to the seniors that attend classes and things at the senior center, what kinds of things do they like, what would they like to have more of, what are they interested in. And then, Joanne Ellis at the food bank is involved, or was involved, in a 60-plus senior survey regarding food insecurity. Another activity that we've been involved in is the Senior Resource Fair. This will be our third annual Senior Resource Fair. It's been very, very well-received within the community. Several hundred people attend. Right now, we have, I believe, close to 50 vendors signed up. People can also get flu shots and pneumonia shots there. We have all kinds of folks who, vendors in the area, or community partners, that have booths and talk to seniors about what their resources are. So, that's another thing we're looking to do, to heighten the awareness among our seniors about what resources are available. And that will be Thursday, November 1st, 9:00 to 12:00. At the senior center, there is no charge. Some of the senior center activities are listed here. I'm not going to try to read all of them, but you can certainly see the kinds of things that go on at the senior center. Something that's been very, very popular is partnering with AARP for free tax assistance with tax forms and that kind of thing. Also, counseling on Medicare, people who have Medicare issues, or maybe they're just going into Medicare, they can make an appointment and find out what their Medicare benefits could be, or what their options are. Something we're very, very proud of is the courtyard excavation and reconstruction at the senior center. That was a pretty lengthy process. It was a noisy process, but it's wonderful. The folks that did the work there, the planning and the work were amazing. They did an excellent job. And as you can see, if I punch this button right, there's an idea of what they were able to do. It's improved it incredibly. It looks more modern. It looks more inviting and friendly for people to come into the area to use the facility. A lot of ADA compliance was done with the sidewalks, the ramps, the rails, the steps. All of that is really great. And of course, the large shade structure, which I understand is very similar to what's at Gauche Park, if I understood correctly. So, as you can see, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Friday, and Councilman Cleveland was there with us. And the reception afterwards, we had an ice cream social. But it was very exciting to hear the seniors and how excited and proud they were to see what had been done there with their facility. So, that was really, really great. Something else that's coming down the road is the 24-passenger community bus that the senior center will be using for some of their trips. But it's not just limited to the senior center. It's also, youth camps and field trips will be using it. I see the Summer at City Hall program will also be using it. So, this is just an idea of what the bus looks like, just sort of a prototype. But hopefully, the bus will eventually get there. Jessica keeps telling us that they're still working on some chassis stuff that's going to make it great, I guess. I don't know about that stuff, but. That's it. Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I would like just to make a comment. One of the main reasons that I really attended is I was Area Four Action Agency on Aging rep for Sutter County for six years. And some of these, this issue came up during that time, and how are we going to find the funding to be able to help Yuba City at that time to get it done? And it just wasn't there. And it's great that this council was able to, the current council was able to make that change and do the improvements.
Yes, yes.
And it's fantastic.
It is fantastic. It is fantastic. And the Area Four Agency on Aging, they do an awful lot of things, but not, it's more services, respite, those kinds of things. So, unfortunately, building materials and building repair wasn't a part of their scope. But I'm glad, I'm certainly glad that the city found a way of doing it.
Right, thank you. You're not done yet.
We're not done yet.
Come back.
You're way too fast. We really aren't done yet.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Harris.
We really aren't.
You're really not done yet.
The senior center, I was all for that.
That too, hopefully.
You just want to go home, don't you?
Oh, I don't.
Ma'am, congratulations on all the hard work over there. It looks wonderful. I had a chance to go through just the other day, and it's, it looks great. I'm excited for everything that's going to be happening over there. I am curious, how many, or if you know, how many folks regularly attend and utilize the facility?
My understanding from what I read was that somewhere between 120 to 150, and I believe that's per month.
Oh, very good.
Or per day, is that what it is?
Per day.
Per day, that's right. Per day. They have a number of exercise classes that start early in the morning, later in the day. They have art classes. They also have various dancing, line dancing classes, in addition to workshops and informational presentations that happen there. So, it's, it's very heavily used.
Good.
Thank you.
You don't get to leave yet.
Okay.
So, through the mayor.
We've got one more.
We, you know, we really have two commissions that are highly important as advisory bodies to the city council, and that's the Youth Commission, but even more so the Senior Commission, because I know I haven't achieved that status yet, and I think no one else here has.
That's what you think.
Maybe Sean has. Senior. But with all joking aside, the importance and the strength of our senior commission was present even when Yuba Sutter Transit decided that they were going to just unilaterally remove a stop in front of that center. And as soon as the senior commission spoke up, that came to an end, and they had to completely redesign their route change again to incorporate that. Their answer was, yeah, so what, seniors have to walk 300 more yards? We said, it's not tolerable. And certainly, the senior commission was the one that put forward the argument. And it was a positive step to retain that there.
I think so. Thank you for acknowledging that. I was a part of the commission when that happened, and it certainly was an eye-opening experience for us as well, because it helped us understand how important it is for us to be a part of or attend other meetings, so that we can hear what's going on. And that's exactly how we found out about that, was one of our members attending the meeting and found out, oh, this is what's, you know, being proposed, and looks like it's going to happen. And we were able to work through not only the city council members, but also the Sutter County supervisors, to say, wait a minute, this is not a good plan. This is not a good idea.
So, again, congratulations on everything that's been done. We will continue. As you find commissioners that are able to serve, we really want to keep it fully staffed up and have you highly involved in every step.
Great. Thank you so much.
And in the meantime, as we mentioned before, through the joint commission meeting, is using each of the commissions as a resource for one another, because the more you partner together, the bigger you become in the community, you know, and represent all areas, and learn from one another and grow from those ideas. So, yeah, continue the great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to move on to our public hearings for the evening. We have our solid waste recycling and organic material collection services, and we're going to have Steve, City Manager, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. The matter before you this evening is a public hearing. What I'd suggest is, I'll give a brief overview, introduce some folks who are in the room here this evening with us. Then, I'll have Joe Sloan, our representative, who has served as the party leading the city's efforts, to come up here and give you some background as well. Of course, you can ask any questions at that time, but have the public hearing, and then bring it back for further consideration. So, Recology is here in force tonight. A lot of familiar faces, including Dave Vaughn, who's a vice president of Recology and overseeing business development. And I know there's another piece to that. I'm going to look down and market, business and market development for Recology. Sal Cornelio, and Sal is our vice president and group manager over the inland area, which is inclusive of Yuba City. David Adler, who's our general manager. Jackie Silman, always a familiar face. Tom Norris, who is the guy who's handling all the numbers for the last, I don't know, 20 years that I've worked with Recology. And Scott, who I just met, Scott, your last name remind me?
Chamberlain.
Chamberlain, okay. And your role?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So, the newest face. It started a month ago, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So, another familiar face who isn't with us this evening, that I simply want to recognize, is Keith Martin, because Keith Martin does play a role in this. He is not only the director of Yuba Sutter Transit, he's also the executive for the Regional Waste Management Authority. And Keith plays a role in overseeing kind of the big picture, and is instrumental in giving us feedback along the way, and how things fit together as a region. And I just want to make that note. Every project here at City Hall requires a project manager. I am unable to do that, and nor would you want me doing that. The role of project manager was and continues to be served by Terrell Locke, to my right, assistant to the city manager. So, all the good things you see before you this evening are attributable to Terrell. If you have any criticisms, I will happily take those personally, meaning, those are mine, not hers. So, what do you have? You have a recommendation before you for the awarding of a new contract to Recology. What's unique about this? This is the contract that was submitted to you, the proposal rather, for consideration on May 15th of this year. There are two minor amendments to that, that are noted in the staff report. This contract will go into effect October 1st of 2019. So, that is 364 days from today, not 2018. I'm going to address 2018 in just one moment. So, that's the 2019 contract. Two variations on that is there, it will be a recycling coordinator position, and whereas the proposal said Yuba City would get its own, we have been agreeable to sharing that on a regional basis, and understand the economies of scale that go along with sharing that as a Yuba Sutter region. Secondly, it pertains to the implementation of service fees for recycling for our commercial customers out there. The proposal included a 50% rate, meaning 50% of the solid waste rates would be the recycling rate. We are recommending, and Recology is in agreement, that actually there would be an early implementation of that rate, at the 30% amount, in April of 2019, so early. October 1st of 2019, when the new contract goes into effect, would be 40%. April of 2020 would be 50%. Why? For two reasons. One is this implementation allows it to gradually increase, so it's less of an impact, less of a sudden impact, that is, among our commercial users for their recycling costs. And additionally, it coincides with the gradual phasing that will be shared by the other jurisdictions in the Yuba Sutter region. So, those are the two amendments to the 2019 contract that are included in your packet, and also included in the recommendation. With regard to the 2018 agreement, the one that is actually the 2011 agreement, that's frankly just a continuation, we are in our final year of that. And so, there are two recommendations with regard to that. I'm going to look down, and they pertain to, one, having a 6% rate adjustment in lieu of the standard rate adjustment that was in process, that was, started over 15%. And so, we're saying, push that aside, go with a 6% adjustment for one year, until the new contract goes into effect. Use of rate stabilization and capitalization funds toward the contractual increase in franchise fees, which your original recommendation recommended a deferral of that. We're now saying, we'd like to use rate stabilization and capitalization funds for that. And then, also have a memorandum of understanding with regard to, this is also shared by the other entities, with regard to any liability pertaining to the landfill and Marysville, that our, any responsibility that we would have toward contributing that would end September 30th, 2018, in other words, two days ago. So, that would stop that as of that time. The alternative that I need to note also, there is an alternative in your staff report that wasn't included in the recommendation. It did include language with regard to using franchise fees for any rate adjustments that the council might so choose. What I'd ask too, is that if you did consider that, you'd also consider use of the rate stabilization and capitalization funds. So, with that, as an overview, and I know that was a lot of overview, but I'll also say, I know that you've had your packet, and the public's had the benefit of seeing that. And if there are any questions as part of the public hearing, be happy to clarify those. Without, unless you have any immediate questions of me, I'd like to invite Joe Sloan to add more to the background on the matter. Okay? All right, Joe.
Good evening, Mayor Dibbalt, council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and hoping that finally after this time, we'll be able to get this thing across the finish line tonight. So, I just wanted to add a bit of clarification. And do I need, can you go to that? Yes, to the items that Steve mentioned, and I'll go through them again quickly, because they are the items that you're being asked to act upon. And what we've done is reinstated that and indicated that there's the preference for using the rate stabilization funds to accomplish the purpose that we had originally intended for foregoing that 1% rate adjustment. So that's one. Amend item C is just a typo that was just corrected. There again, under the staff report amendment to the alternatives, there again, it refers to the rate stabilization issues that Steve described. And then really, the only one that I think that I should add to is that it was as a result of some negotiation whereby the rate adjustment process that has been the standard process has been applied to this contract throughout its history was still in play because we had opted to carry on through the end of this current contract, implementing our new contract in August, I mean, sorry, October 1st of 2019. And in an effort to kind of settle things, we just said, we offered a 6%, initially we offered a 5% rate adjustment, which after some back and forth, we settled at a 6% rate adjustment. And with, along with that, they were going to withdraw that rate application. And Sal Cornilio sent a letter to the Regional Waste Management Authority indicating as much, that whenever the council takes the action to implement the 6% rate adjustment, they'll withdraw that rate application. And then finally, the memorandum of understanding that was originally distributed to you was our version, it was, it had taken the memorandum of understanding that had been distributed to the other cities and we essentially edited it just to be strictly and solely a memorandum of understanding between Yuba City and the company. And as a result then afterwards of Recology's attorney looking at it, there was some language that he wanted to reinsert into that MOU that we didn't object to, and that's the reason that you have the amended one that's here tonight. It reflects the changes that were requested by Recology's attorney after we had distributed that original one to you. So having covered those things and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know that we have spent a lot of time on these issues. You've all received the staff report. You've seen our report regarding the final, the conclusion of the negotiation process and our recommendation that you move forward with the base proposal as it was originally offered and negotiated by and between the city and Recology for the implementation of a new contract to commence on October 1st, 2019.
Okay. Bring it back to council for any questions of Joe or Steve at this time before we open it to the public? No? All right. So being that this is a public hearing, we will go ahead and open this for the members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue. You may step up to the podium. Name, please state your name and address for the record. Oh, you can go ahead and do it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Sal Cornilio, Vice President and Group Manager with Recology. It's been a long process. We're glad we're finally here. I hope you guys agree with the, or approve the staff recommendation that's in front of you tonight. And on behalf of the employee owners at Recology, we're looking forward to another 10-plus years and maybe even more servicing this community. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Sal. And we do have a request to speak from Scott Kuhn, President of Recycling Industries. So this request came in earlier, so you will have five minutes.
Honorable Mayor DeBol and members of the city council, my name is Scott Kuhn. My business is at 140 Epley Drive in Yuba City. Again, I am grateful for the opportunity to speak to you today. As President of Recycling Industries, I want to express to you my most sincere thanks and appreciation for putting this waste hauling contract out to competitive bidding, out to the competitive bidding process. It is clear that your leadership and foresight in putting this contract out to bid has benefited not only Yuba City, but also every other member jurisdiction of the RWMA. As an industry insider, the garbage and collection rates resulting from this procurement process are more representative of the marketplace. In addition, there is a shared risk on the part of the winning contractor, which is something the ratepayers have needed for over 40 or more years. As for Recology, I offer my sincere congrat-- may I rephrase that? As for Recology, I offer my most sincere congratulations for becoming the clear winner in a bid contest with our nation's largest waste haulers. This procurement process has validated this organization and should put to rest any contention that they have been the recipient of a local government handout in this contract. They earned the win. As for Recycling Industries, we are still here. Recycling Industries attempted to partner with every bidder, including Recology, in providing a convenient location to transfer garbage and process recyclables within the city limits. Through this entire process, it is interesting to try to understand how Recycling Industries became a center point for ridicule and attack for simply trying to grow and provide a greater service and a more competitive contract for the ratepayers of Yuba City. We are a family-owned business that started in the backyard, in the backyard of my home on B Street in the mid-1970s. Today, we are approaching 100 employees. I think the actual number is 88. But with four facilities, two in Yuba City and two in Sacramento, and with the approval and completion of our transfer station here in Yuba City, we will probably exceed that number of employees. All that said, I hope that with the approval of this contract with Recology, we can all move forward to even greater accomplishments. Now, just one last thought, and I'm not sure if this is the proper place to say these things, but I hope that the citizens of Yuba City fully realize the incredible performance, incredible performance by this city, the city council has brought about. In this election season, we have seen a lot of criticism of this council, such as, they're slow to make decisions, their actions are not well thought out, and a whole host of others too numerous to mention. Well, those criticisms of this council just are not true. I'm not going to tell you how old I am, but I have been around a while. When I first moved to Yuba City, the 10th Street Bridge wasn't even built. Over the years, I have built restaurants in New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, as soon as I find the last page here. Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Nebraska, and I lived in Central America for a year and a half. And I know quality when I see it. And this city council is one of the best I have ever seen. You are truly the champions. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay. Public hearing is now closed and we'll bring it back to the council for further questions, comments, staff, or motion. I see buttons moving.
Yes. Through the mayor.
Yes.
As was stated by our illustrious Joe Sloan at the very beginning, that if we chose a path of, that we did, that it would be, could become very contentious in the community. And it did. But Yuba City is unique in this area. We are the densest population. We have different needs than any of the other jurisdictions. We have basically no rural, a few holdouts and some properties. So we were uniquely needing services developed in different directions than the rest because they are very constant, very small communities or highly rural counties and purposely that We did do an extra inquiry through the consultant as to look at us as a more dense and larger urban entity. And to me, that validated our approach with, when the results came back from their, just looking a little deeper into some numbers and services needed being so different than So I appreciate the patience actually that there was within the community because actually it was very patient. It didn't get like some other communities that I have seen when waste services are brought out in competition. It's, it gets amazingly, let's just say, more contentious than it actually did in our community. So I appreciate the patience and the kindness that we did receive as a council. And benefit of the doubt, a lot of doubt sometimes, but some benefit, and I appreciate it. I am very pleased with the results. If anybody really wants to know the contract, look a little beyond just the summary and the staff report. Read about the next 10, 15 pages in the attachments and you'll actually understand the accomplishments that the council have bid and negotiated for the ratepayers. And it's ratepayers, not just citizens, commercial and residential in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Through the mayor. Thank you. I think it's important to note that there's two contracts here. It's been said tonight that there's two contracts. But I think the public is somewhat confused by the fact that there's two contracts. There's one that started in 2011 and goes until September 30th of 2019. That's part of what we've talked about, or that's part of what the presentation was tonight. And then there's a contract that goes on from there, from October 1st through the next 10 years with the possibility of two, five-year additions to it. I think it's important for our community to understand the significance of the work that Recology does in our community, what they have provided in our community, the services that they provide are some of the very best. And that's important. That's important for all of us to understand that. That's never been under attack at all. In any of our discussions, we were looking for one outcome, and that was to test the market. Testing the market meant that we had to go out for a procurement process or through that process. It was long. I was the cocky one that sat up here and said, hey, the only way we're going to put this thing out in the public and not go behind closed doors was to do this in a public venue, to have more input from the public. What did we hear? We heard things like, the rates are going to go up. I'm currently being attacked for that. It's just not the truth. The rates did not go up. What do we get out of it? We get 80% more collection capacity in our residential containers. That's important. What else do we get out of it? We get new equipment, new bins, new trucks, working in the city. Will they become old? Absolutely. They're kind of wear, but we get to start at a level that will provide a higher level of service to our community. And I'm proud of the fact that Recology worked through the process. They were the successful bidder. Absolutely. As Mr. Kuhn said, you won and we're proud of that fact. The home team had an opportunity to come forward and in a fair process beat four other national competitors in the process. That makes us proud. That makes me proud as an individual. What the outcome has produced is a better rate for our ratepayer themselves. I have absolutely no interest other than what I pay at my home or my business for the collection of waste. There is no other concern that I have other than what that outcome was for seniors, for any my neighbor, for neighboring businesses, for the commercial businesses, that the service be of the highest level. And that's what we accomplished through this. To be attacked and told that I've been embed with special interests is absolutely the most false thing that has ever been said. I take it personal. I take it personal when I get attacked over a decision to protect the ratepayer, the commercial businesses, and the company that was already the home team. When the employees were concerned over the possibility of another company coming in, we put in the, in the whole process, we tried to level the playing field for the employees. And I think that they understood that. And I think it's important that we continue to understand that. And we need to move forward as a community, proud of what's been accomplished, proud of a company that is a true community partner, that is a remarkable, a remarkable company that has stepped forward in an effort to become the award winner, the individuals that will provide that service in this city potentially for 20 years. And we're proud of you and we're proud of our community for standing behind this decision.
Anybody else?
Indeed, Sal, a long process, a long road to get to this point. Well over a year, we've all been discussing solid waste and solid waste management and I've learned more than I ever thought I ever would in one lifetime. But I tell you, it's been interesting. We've worked very hard at it, done a lot of background talk to a lot of people. We went through a process that required some tough decisions along the way. And, you know, those of us sitting up here and basically anybody in any business, you strive, when you do make decisions, to look downstream a little bit to the point where you want to be indemnified in the event of a third-party review of your processes. And whether that third-party review comes in the form of the court of law or the court of public opinion, it nevertheless will occur. And we're prepared for that. And we need to just be certain that our decisions come pure of heart. And to where, you know, when you, when it does occur and we are judged, we want to ideally ensure that perhaps even the most eloquent of orators would be very hard-pressed to extricate anything but the most benevolent of motives from our actions. And I think we've done that.
And I think we've done that. And we're five different people up here with five different opinions. Eventually, we come to a point to where there's a fork in the road and you've got to go yes or no. We have two, we had two to three, no secret there. And although my opinion of the way the process should originally occurred is, remains unchanged, we as a council, by majority vote, decided to go this way and I stand by that. And I think the process did hold out and it was tough. There's some very interesting things that occur in these processes, but here we are with a, with a proposal and an agreement in front of us, before of us, five of us as a council, that clearly represents something that folks on both sides of the table are at a minimum okay with and support. And, and it works for our community and it works for all of us. And I'm, I'm proud of the, the work they put in. I'm proud of the employees at Recology who had to weather some tough times, some uncertainties there and I acknowledge that. I too, like Councilman Buckland, acknowledge the tremendous amount of community support that Recology continuously puts into this, to our community. That, that home team spirit is alive and well. And I thank you publicly for that. So it's my intention, of course, you probably gather by now, I fully intend to support this recommendation by staff and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to dovetail on that or follow that. I just want to thank.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, you go. Anyway, I want to thank Recology and all its employees for everything they've done the last year going through this process and to many more years of service in our community. Thank you all. Thank you.
And I'm just going to wrap it up with, I'd like a couple of things. For one, it was really important on my behalf and I believe on the entire council is to do, do our due diligence, to make sure that the rate payers were getting the best quality. It was never a personal thing. We, you know, the community service that Recology has always provided has always been the utmost of grace and great service to all of, all of our region. But it was important that I, sitting here as a council member, for the constituents, the rate payers, that I do my due diligence coming on board to make sure that the decisions that I'm making, I'm educated on it and I know that I have all the information in front of me. And it was important. And I think it is a long process, absolutely, not in disagreement with that. But through that process, I think it was very transparent. I know there are still some questions on details and so forth and the general public doesn't necessarily always understand that. I'm going to take that moment to have Joe put up the comparison chart just to go through it just really quickly, just side by side. And then that, after that, I just want to say thank you so very much for all the effort, all of the work that was put on, not only with Recology, but also with our city staff who worked countless hours to carry this bid process out. Due diligence on both ends.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Dibball. And I will jump to that, but I want to, after having labored through this for the last couple of years actually, since we started down this path, I'd like to acknowledge Scott Cunin and actually David as well, because they were out pounding the drum in every community relentlessly pressing to take this to the public bidding process. And as you recall, and thank you for acknowledging it, Mr. Buckland, you know, we, our recommendation was that you negotiate a, a new contract and you guys opted to go another direction. And I think that the result of that is important and it really, just to dovetail on, on what you, you guys had all said in your remarks, there's a really important accomplishment here. And that is that we could have negotiated and we probably could have come very close to the same place that we ended up here after the procurement. That possibly would have happened, but what we wouldn't have known is what Mr. Cunin advocated for every public meeting that he was in and that some of you as council people did is, and that is, we're never going to know unless we test the market. And so that's what you've done. You've, you've tested the market, you've gone out, the company that you're incumbent has shown the strength of incumbency and also the power of the pen. They've, they've, they've sharpened their, their pencil and of five really good bona fide bidders, they prevailed. And, but they prevailed through a public bidding process. And that in itself is a service, not just to Yuba City, but to the other jurisdictions as well. Okay, so I will, let me, is that a pointer? So this is your current rate. And by the way, these rates as they're represented up here, these don't include the RWMA surcharge or the NPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Emissions System fee. Those, those are fees that are add-ons after the franchise fees. But all the rates are compared in this form. So the comparatively, this, this is the, the base rate here, that 2729 includes the franchise fee and in this particular case, it's 9% because that's what it is right now. So Recology gets that, they get paid the 2729, I'm sorry, that includes the 9% franchise fee which they remit. But if you take that 2729 and you add the 6% adjustment that is before you tonight, that base rate will go to 2893. So there's been some interest all along in comparing the rates that were secured through this process to the rates that were secured through the negotiation process. And that's what this is an attempt to do. And by the way, it's very difficult to do it because it's not actually really apples to apples, so we try to do our best to make that, that, that case here. So the RWMA rate right now as well, well, not now, but until September 30th was that same rate, 2729. This rate, whenever it gets adjusted by 6%, goes to 2893. The new rate for 32-gallon service, that's the small can that everybody has right now, the new rate for that service, which about, I don't know what it is region-wide, but in Yuba City, about 80% of the rate payers have the 32-gallon. So I don't know if that holds for the whole thing, but that, that's what they are here. So there's, that rate for the 32-gallon can is $28. It's $28. But our service over here, once we go into 2019 for the new contract, and thank you, by the way, Mr. Buckland, for making that distinction. We're talking about two separate things here tonight. One is concluding this current contract that we're under, which we've got another year of, and the other is what's going to happen when the new contract starts. So this essentially represents what's happening at the end here of this current contract. It's the 2011 contract. So if we're comparing, right now, we still have, by we, I mean, Yuba City still has the variable can rate, we still have 80% of the people in the 32-gallon, so that's the number that we use there. And that, we use the, the negotiated rate for the new contract in RWMA for comparison's sake. So what does that mean? It means that during the first year of this contract, of, of the new contract for, for RWMA and the last year of our contract, for that service level, the RWMA rate payers are, their rates are going to be about 93 cents per household for that service level, lower than the residents will pay here in, in Yuba City. That's for this year. Then going into next year, this rate, this 2925 rate represents the default service that we've recommended is in the contract for every household to receive three 96-gallon containers. So just for perspective, thinking about it, everybody remembers back in the olden days when you went to Home Depot or the hardware store and bought your trashcans. Those were almost all 32-gallon cans. What everybody's going to have in the, in the, for comparative storage capacity is nine of those cans. That's what these three carts, these three carts will have the storage capacity of nine of those cans that you used to, you know, have to drag out to the curb every day before you went to automated service. So you're going to have that service, three 90-gallon containers. We used, now, in the RWMA contract, they also have a rate for 90-gallon containers. So we're use, we're comparing like to like here, we're comparing like to like here. We use the 32-gallon rate here, here we use the 96-gallon rate. So our 96-gallon rate for all three 96s is 22, 22, I'm sorry, 2925. The rate over there as adjusted, because there, they will get a rate adjustment next year when your contract is initiated. So when the Yuba City contract is initiated, it initiates with that rate. This represents, and so, we don't have any idea with certainty what the CPI is going to be for next year, so I just did a 10-year look back. I did a 10-year look back and the 10-year look back indicated that the average over the last 10 years was 2.17%, 2.17% annually. So I just applied the 10-year average to this base rate and that gives them a rate of 2963 on the 20, on the 96-gallon rate. So they, in their 96-gallon rate, it's, the rate, the startup rate is $29. When you add that 2.17%, it's 2963, which means for comparable service in year two of the RWMA contract, year one of the Yuba City contract, the Yuba City residents will be paying a little bit less for comparable service. So that's, that's the distinction that's made. Then there are a couple of other things that are not inconsequential, but I don't know how many people will use this, but there's no charge in your contract for extra bags. There's a $4.47 per extra bag charge in the RWMA contract. And as far as extra carts go, if you want an extra garbage cart, the extra garbage cart in the Yuba City contract is $8 a month and in the RWMA contract, it's 1550 a month. So this is not an exercise that I particularly relish doing because in my, in my evaluation, I looked closely at the, the contracts that were negotiated over in the other jurisdictions and I think they got a very good, solid deal. I'm, I'm happy with what they got. But you should also be happy with what you got because as I look back in my notes and I look at what your objectives were as a council, I think that you've accomplished those in spades. That everything that you had set out to do with this process, you've been able to accomplish and that the end result of that process has been a good one and I think the end result of this one is especially good. So the, this ration, this, this notion here, as it applies to residential, will also apply to commercial. And so I guess the bottom line difference is, is that during this last year of your current contract, your rates are going to be a little bit higher than the rates in the other jurisdictions. Beginning next year, because there will be a rate adjustment to the base rates, our, our rates, by our, I'm saying Yuba City's rates, starting next year in 2019, are the same rates, exact same rates on the commercial side as the rates that are being charged right now today there. But their rates will undergo an adjustment and yours won't. So there'll always be from that time forward, unless there are other changes that come about in the contract, that the Yuba City rate payers will always be paying a little bit less because they're starting a year later and they're not going to have that, that first rate adjustment.
Joe, can you go to the next page and just side by side, show the chart?
Okay, sure.
The next one.
Next one?
Yeah. Right there.
Okay, yeah, these are.
You don't have to go into great details since you spoke about it, but this way it kind of gives that visual for everyone to see side by side and then.
Okay, well, just the first three are the new trucks versus used equipment. And you know, the, the benefit of that seems obvious to me, but it's not obvious to everyone and I can certainly describe why I think it's better if you'd like me to, but the fact of the matter is, is that that's a pretty significant distinction, I think, that you're going to have all new trucks, res, commercial containers and residential carts in your community. The other jurisdictions, they'll be getting replacements as they go along, as they always do. There's, they're all, but you're going to be starting out with all new trucks, carts and containers. An item of much of, I guess, local concern is how much the jurisdictions are paying for this process, which by the way, I can tell you is by comparison, by comparison to other jurisdictions that are going through procurement processes with contracts that have an annual revenue requirement in the $14 million a year range, what you've paid for this process and what you will have paid when you're all said and done is a bargain compared to what other communities pay for the same type of service. So there's the, in your RFP, the contractor committed to paying a $100,000 fee to the city upon award of the contract and that's that $100,000. I'm pointing at this screen, sorry. That's this $100,000. The other jurisdiction had a $160,000 fee. You know, it's been said, oh yeah, but they did five contracts and we only did one here, but of course, that's not really true. They, they had one contract to negotiate and it was, they negotiated a contract with RWMA. There were nuances that had to be, you know, there, there were some issues that were small distinctions between the contracts, but by and large, it was the same. And by the way, it's the contract that we wrote. It's that, they didn't, included in, in that cost is this contract document that, that you have here. This contract document is the contract that we prepared for the negotiation back before you guys decided to, to go out to bid. So they use the same document. And by, it's by and large, the same document right now. There's probably 5% of it that's different from, from the RWMA contract to this one. Now, there's some important distinctions, but by and large, it's the same agreement. Franchise fees are 10% in both. We have a road maintenance fee, they don't have one. The community partnership fee, we don't have one. I have 1% there and I've been told that it's actually between 1.3 and 1.4%. I, I just, I quickly calculated that because it's actually not represented as a percent in their contract. It's a flat fee and I made an estimate of it and I was off. So it's actually a little different than that. It's not 1%, it's a little more. The contract term, their, the primary terms of both contracts are 10 years. The, but they're not running concurrently. Our starts a year later, so the, they're both primary terms are 10 years with two five-year extensions at the mutual agreement of the parties here and three in RWMA. So, and the, the fact of the matter is that it'll probably be, if I'm making a prediction, it's that the company's going to do a good job and that they're going to have opportunities to execute those extensions and they're going to want to and you're going to want them to. So you know, this is, this is a 20-year deal. I already went through that. The residential extra bag costs, no charge in Yuba City, $4.40 RWMA. The, the same is true on the extra refuse cart, eight bucks in Yuba City and 1550 in RWMA. I put this in here because originally in this chart, we had a different rollout of the recycling charges, but I think wisdom prevailed in that, you know, this is, actually this feature right here is a quantum change in municipal contracts that's being initiated, I think, here and I hope to see it everywhere. Because what's happened for 20 years is that contractors have struggled through these crazy ups and downs in the markets for recyclable commodities. And the fact is, is that recycling service has never really been free. It's, it's because there's always been a cost associated with it. But markets were strong enough that they could subsidize the cost and that the contractor would then essentially embed those actual costs that weren't covered by the sale of recyclables over in their other services and garbage service and so forth. So it's never free. People didn't pay for it, but it still had a cost to it. And because of the fact that we're at this crossroads right now and there seems to be a lot of national focus on the fact that recycling markets have, have cratered. They've, they've, they've really crashed. I'm very confident that they're going to recover, but I don't have that crystal ball and who knows when it's going to happen. I mean, that we could stay in this trough for a long time. They will eventually come back because they're commodities and people need the stuff. So it, it will eventually come around. But what we've tried to do here and what I think has, has been accomplished and I think and I think can become a model, is that we're trying to make sure that the contractor is compensated for the work that they do, and they're not dependent up on, uh, China for, uh, to get high prices for recyclable commodities. So, that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish there. Um, and, uh, it was Recology's, uh, I think, good idea to ramp this up and to do it in this way. Uh, tha- that wasn't our idea, that was theirs, and, and I think it's a good idea. So-
Can we go to the next one? I think there's, is there one more?
Um, yeah. The closure, post-closure, uh, uh, the, in RWMA, that's taken care of, because they've, their old contract, they terminated early, and they've started the new one already. Um, uh, along with the six percent, uh, rate adjustment that we hope that you, uh, uh, pass this evening, uh, that landfill liability will pass as well for Yuba City. Uh, commercial organics rates, they're, they're the same. Um, here again, this has to do with, uh, the, the, uh, rate review. The rate review that's currently in place will be withdrawn by the company once the, uh, uh, rate adjustment is approved. Uh, the rate adjustment procedure, and I will say this, and I don't really wanna belabor it, but, uh, throughout the, the back and forth that we had with the company, uh, there was quite a lot of interest in changing some of the terminology and requirements in the contract, as it related to rate adjustments and extraordinary rate adjustments. And, we saw a real benefit in, to the city in, uh, sticking with the languages that was in the contract, because we feel that it keeps the city in the strongest position to be able to do that. Uh, on the other side of the aisle, they gave up some of those things. Um, and, uh, we are happy that, that we stuck with our guns, uh, because here's the, uh, the difficulty. You've got a great, uh, group over there on the bench for Recology right now, but who knows if they're gonna, this is a long contract, and who knows if any of you are gonna be here, or Steve, or, and I'm certainly not gonna be here. Tonight's the last night you'll ever see me. I'm gone. No. Anyway, that was, that was stand-up humor. Come on. Uh, so, um, we, uh, the, the, as, as far as that adjustment language goes, uh, we think that particularly, uh, considering the fact that nobody knows the future, and everybody here may have goodwill, uh, we needed the city to rema, uh, keep the strong upper hand in the contract, not because you wanna rule it with an iron fist, but because you wanna be the one that calls the shots, and, uh, that you want to not unfairly limit the ability of the contractor to get rate adjustments, but that you control that process more firmly, and that's what was accomplished there. So, um, yeah, and then, I guess, the final one, city services. Uh, there's, there's not gonna be any limit on city services during the term of your contract. Uh, in, in the other contract, if the, and I think I'm gonna ex, uh, describe this properly, if the service level grows beyond five percent of the, uh, current levels or startup levels in the contract, the contractor has an opportunity, not an obligation, but they have an opportunity to charge for, for those, or to, to seek compensation for those. So-
Great.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, with that, um, do we have a motion, or any other comments or questions? Yes?
Give a question?
Yeah, there is just a little, since we did go through the chart stuff, there is just a little bit I would like, like to point out, is, um, I kinda went over some of the, the records and stuff, um, of the bid and the data that brought it together, and, um, I was really curious as to what the value of, um, having all brand-new equipment was versus, um, existing, uh, the existing, uh, be, using all the numbers, it's, uh, approximately five million dollars in value, a little, maybe a little more than that, um, using all used, uh, equipment and stuff, uh, including trucks. And, according to the, uh, records that were, it's, uh, close to ten million dollars in value of, uh, new equipment, since, uh, just one of those ten trucks for collection is three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars. And, we have ten of those, so right there, that's three-point-three-five million, um, that, um, that we are gonna be getting a benefit at Yuba City. And, it's not just the money. They're Eco-Diesels, they're, um, all of the, supposedly, all of the hydraulics and everything are, and no flaws, which I know in manufacturing, things happen, but all the containers are sealed, no leaks, no cracks are from usage and stuff, and, uh, we'll be able to start out, uh, fresh and new with, uh, the citizens and ratepayers of Yuba City. Not just the, the, uh, residential, but all the commercial, we'll get some really nice new equipment. Uh, there was also, I think, in there, uh, for the big dump-offs that we have, there is a, um, I'm gonna say, significant, uh, less cost to have 'em dumped in Yuba City or dropped off and picked up. Um, so, some of the commercial activity is going to, some are gonna be benefiting, um, in this process, so, um, a little up, little up here, a lot down, uh, but I think we have a good representative of the actual cost that each ratepayer or customer has. We try to get as close to the real cost and have as few subsidy levels as possible, and make it to where we're telling the truth to the citizens and what it really costs. And, uh, that was, that was part of the goal. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Oh, go ahead. Give a question, Tom?
No, comment, go ahead.
Okay. I think, if it's be through, are you, Joe, or Mr. City Manager, on the alternative number two? Um, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for the rate stabilization and capitalization, capitalization fund to buy down the rate. That one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, is that otherwise allocated for something else if we don't go with it, or is it just there for the taking?
It would be for solid waste activities.
So, just in, in general?
It's the nature of the term. Um, so, i- historically, we've used it, uh, as ra, to normalize rates.
Okay.
Uh, for one purpose. And, secondarily, uh, Recology has had, uh, specific capital costs, usually related to the landfill, and rather than including them in the rate base, we've relied upon those funds for one-time payments to Recology for, uh, we call it, capital needs. Uh, in this case, because the landfill liability is, um, we'll say, going away, uh, the money can be used for rate stabilization, so the, um, funds for the franchise fee and the, um, if you used it for another purpose, that, those would be defined purposes. If you didn't use it, then the money would remain, uh, for the future discretion of the council, for so, all, say, you know, solid waste activities.
Do you have a general idea what the current balance of that fund is?
Uh, the current balance is zero. Uh, it wa, it is zero, because we have contributed all the funds, uh, toward, um, responsibilities, uh, related to the, uh, the landfill out there, uh, working through Keith Martin at the RWMA. And, um, this would be the funding that would come in as of October one of two thousand eighteen, for the final year of the current contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, Councilmember Buckler.
Uh, Joe, I, I got a text from both Dave and Sal. They said, "Do you promise?" Um-
Oh, stay away.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well.
I just got it.
Oh, you just got the text, or you got the joke? Okay.
All right. You wanna say feelings mutual, I know you do.
Um, you know, there's, there's a couple of people I was remiss in, uh, in not thanking for their involvement, and that was the, uh, company that, um, really put forward the, the, the closest and really, uh, uh, fantastic proposal that caused, uh, greater negotiation, and that was Republic Services. Um, I, and I thank them, and I, I see some of their members here, uh, that certainly thank you. Uh, also, thank you to RI, um, who, I mean, dating back to some of my first years on the RWMA, um, have always pushed, uh, to have better services in our community, and they are, um, one of those that stay focused on, on what it takes, and, and, uh, certainly, uh, Mr. Kuhn and I, Senior, um, date back to those days when he lived on B Street, I think, um, at, or maybe even further. I'm not gonna go into the whole story. Um, but, but certainly, thank you, uh, for your involvement, and, uh, which is as equally important to the outcome of this process as, uh, what, uh, Recology's, uh, efforts have been too, also.
Great. All right. To-
I can make a motion.
Unless there's a other, yeah, unless there's other comments, we can go for a motion.
I wanna make a motion that, um, we accept, we move forward with staff's recommendation, A, one and two, B, one and two, C, and in light of, uh, we're eliminating, uh, post-closure liability, and we're expecting some money on October first, I would like to pass on that savings to our ratepayers, and use the rate stabilization and capitalization fund to buy down the rate, which would be also proposing to, we, um, approve alternative number two, as proposed by staff.
I would second that.
And, Mr. Mayor, or Miss, Mrs., Miss, Mrs. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, Madam Mayor, uh, and just to confirm that the recommendations are those that are contained in the, the amended, the amendments that were passed out and, and explained to the council.
Yes.
The one that we just received?
Yes.
Yes.
That's good.
Thank you.
And, Tim, you're not used to saying "miss." Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. All right. Done.
There's a contract.
Contract is done. All right.
I'll come visit. Just not on this side.
Thank you.
Hope like this won't take two seconds.
In a different venue.
And now, it cleared out again. All right. Well, we cleared the room again. Okay. So, our next item is a selective, uh, traffic enforcement grant to include DUI enforcement and education efforts. We have-
Sergeant Kim Slate.
Yes. So, we have, okay. Wait for-
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmen. Tonight, I'm gonna bring in the, uh, staff report for the, uh, eighteen-nineteen Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grant. Uh, this year's grant is in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, um, which, uh, sixty-two thousand of that and some change is used for, uh, overtime costs, uh, fifteen thousand is for equipment use, and the rest of the funds are for training, uh, expenses, and DUI checkpoints, as well as, uh, some of the DRE certifications that we do. Um, this year, just on a, on a single note, DUI saturation has gone up from thirty to fifty-two operations, so, the Office of Traffic Safety is, uh, uh, almost doubled in the amount of enforcement, enforcement action that we're gonna be doing over the course of the next year. Obviously, uh, the alternatives for the grant is not to accept it, but the recommendation is, uh, for City Council to accept the funds in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, to be used by the Police Department.
Great, thank you. Um, any questions at this time from council?
I have a, I have a quick question regarding, uh, why the step up in the amount, uh, and basically, uh, leaning into, um, have, has it been a noted increase of DOIs or being under the influence over the last couple of years that is gonna increase this, or is it just, um, a natural process of, uh, doing higher concentration?
No, actually, there has been an increase, uh, as we sit right, uh, now, this year, we've got about a twenty percent increase in DUI arrests. A lot of, uh, a lot of that has to do with some of the training that we're receiving. Um, in fact, I have three officers in South Sacramento tonight doing their field exercises to be, uh, DRE certified. So, they'll be out there for the next three nights, out in South Sac, doing those. So, that's associated with it. Um, and then also, the increase is just some additional funds that have come forth, and some of the different, uh, funding for the federal grant.
Okay. More training, I love it. You guys, the more you, uh, get understanding and knowledge of what your job is, uh, the better, uh, you can do in our community.
Absolutely.
It's awesome.
Through the mayor.
Thank you, yes.
Uh, is, is any of the money to be expended in multi-jurisdictional efforts, or is this all just?
This is all just Yuba City. They've, it would pretty much gone away from the Avoid Nine and things like that. They're just, um, they've cut back on a lot of other things, like warrant services, um, stakeouts, they're cutting back on a lot of those things, because the, uh, I guess, the bang for the buck isn't there. I mean, when we go out and we do a lot of our warrant services, we're trying to serve warrant, uh, up to twenty warrants a night, and we're only actually, you know, making one arrest. So, especially in our community, where, you know, a lot of our population is out work at the wee hours, either wee hours in the morning, or even late into the evening time. So, it's hard to serve a lot of those warrants. So, that's kind of the adjustment, as far as that goes. No multi-jurisdictional monies at this point.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Um, since this is a public hearing, we're gonna go ahead and open this to the public, um, for, uh, any comments, um, on this issue? If anybody wants to speak, may I step up? Nope? Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and back to council for motion or additional questions? Yes?
I'd move to approve staff's recommendation and accept the award from the Office of Traffic Safety in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, and, um, have it go to the appropriate accounts.
A second.
Yep, second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a bid award, wastewater treatment facility improvement projects. Mandy.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the councilmembers, good evening. Tonight, I will be making a recommendation to improve, uh, to, um, award a construction contract, along with the professional services contracts, to complete a very important project at the city's wastewater treatment facility. City's wastewater treatment facility has been in service for over about forty-six years, uh, continuous service, twenty-four-seven, all along years, and this facility is doing a great job to protect the environment and the public health, and it needs to stay in service for the future as well. So, the council authorized Public Works, Public Works Department to bid the project for competitive bidding back in May first, two thousand eighteen, and the bids were advertised on June fifteenth, and the bids were opened on July thirty-first of this year, and we have received five bids. And, the engineer's estimate was seventeen-point-six million dollars on this project, and all the bids are listed on this slide. So, there's a, um, as you can see from the slide, there is a significant spread between the bids, which is between approximately one percent to twenty-five percent of the engineer's estimate. And, today's construction market that, um, seem, that bid spread seems pretty reasonable, because there are not a lot of contractors, they're really busy, there are not a lot of workforce available to bid the project, and, um, and the staff is glad that our, uh, the bid that we are making recommendation to award is, uh, is about approximately seven percent over engineer's estimate, which is considered reasonable. And, the first, the lowest bid was from C- for competitive bidding back in May 1st, 2018, and the bids were advertised on June 15th, and the bids were opened on July 31st of this year, and we have received five bids. And the engineer's estimate was $17.6 million on this project, and all the bids are listed on this slide. So there's a, as you can see from the slide, there is a significant spread between the bids, which is between approximately 1% to 25% of the engineer's estimate. And today's construction market that seem, that bid spread seems pretty reasonable because there are not a lot of contractors, they're really busy, there are not a lot of workforce available to bid the project, and, and the staff is glad that our, the bid that we are making recommendation to award is, is about approximately 7% over engineer's estimate, which is considered reasonable. And the first, the lowest bid was from CEO Bra and Company, and their bid was determined non-responsive as the electrical subcontractor did not meet the city's mandatory minimum experience requirements. It is very important, and the City Council adopted a resolution for the minimum qualifications for the prime contractors and the electrical contractors. In this case, Obera's electrical subcontractor did not meet those minimum requirements. The second bidder, Western Water Contractors, was determined responsive, however, their bid was about 7% over engineer's estimate, and I would like to introduce Mr. Josh McCarver, President of Western Waters. And this is the fiscal impact of the total project, the construction contract is in the amount of about 18.8 million dollars, and then the engineering services during construction, and I will be going in a little more detail about all of those items, and the construction management and inspection that the council has awarded back in May 1st, 2018, a project administration, control system programming, we are going to do a lot of electrical and control system improvements at the facility, and it leads a lot of computer programming and the programming how to automatically run the facility 24/7. And then the council also authorized to purchase the equipment sole sourced and engineering design services that has been through the reconciliation process, we, we needed to pay more of those, that has been paid, that's adjustment in the, in the budget, and then the project contingency in the amount of $2 million. And I, I really appreciate and thanks to finance departments, support and help for financing, helping us to finance the project for, through a, through the bonds, bonds market, Robin and Spencer, thank you, appreciate it. And because of that, we are going, we are at this point to make recommendation to award this project. So engineering services during construction is going to be recommended to the design engineer Woodard and Curran, and they are going to respond to the request for, request for informations, they will review all the submittals and the shop drawings in this complicated project, and they will also provide assistance to the staff and the construction manager to make sure the project is being constructed in accordance with the design documents. And at the end, they will prepare as-built drawings to finish the project. In the control system programming integration, staff is recommended to make, award this contract to the electrical design engineer, ArcSign Engineering of Reading, and they will be doing computer programming, and they will be updating, upgrading our automatic system, which is to see, control the system facilities, called SCADA Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, and other related services for the electrical and computer programming. Anticipated schedule of this project, mobilization will start early spring 2019, and anticipation, anticipated completion will be two years after, which is spring of 2021. And this is the aerial of the facility and the location of the various improvements where there, we are going to constructing it throughout the facility. It's a large project, very important and critical project. And with that, I would like to make a recommendation to reject the bid submitted by CEO Bra and Company of Richmond, California as non-responsive for failure to meet the mandatory experience requirements, and award the construction contract to Western Water Constructors of Santa Rosa in the amount of $18,860,167, and then award the professional services agreement to Woodward and Curran for the engineering services during construction, award the professional services to ArcSign Engineering of Reading to do the control system programming and related services, and authorize a supplemental appropriations and related transfers in the amount of $121,826.57 from unallocated CAP reserves to account, accounts listed on the, on the staff report. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mandy at this time?
Through the mayor.
Mandy. So, when this project is done, that awful smell we get in that section of Uba City, especially how it invades the ballpark, will virtually cease to exist, or will it still have some once the covers get on it? How, how will that be? Because there are some complaints, and rightfully so, from the businesses and the, the residents in that area. So how much of an impact will it have on the odors?
Well, there is a, the lids are floating covers.
Yes.
And there is a sludge on the, on the slide, on, on the perimeter of each, it's freely floating sludge.
Yes.
And it contributes some odors, and it also contributes fly issue. And with the new project, we are going to add, replace these covers with the stainless steel covers, which are completely sealed from the top, and there will not be any exposed sludge. Definitely it will reduce the odors, and it will also significantly reduce the fly issues caused by that process. In addition to that, we are going to change, replace the, the dewatering system right here, and the existing dewatering system is a belt press, and it is open system. Of course, we have a odor control system installed on it, and the new system that we selected is considered better in order, for the odors. It is closed system, simple, and it is, it is not an open system, it is a closed system. It will also significantly reduce the odors that we are seeing today. Will it eliminate all the odors? Probably not. Will, definitely this, this project will reduce significant amount of odors and the fly issues.
I know those presidents in that area will definitely be thankful for that in, in about a, you know, maybe a year and a half where the significant change will start. Thank you.
Yes.
Through, through the mayor. We, we that live in that area refer that, to that as the sedentary heat-induced treatment odor in, in that area. And on warm, muggy nights, it gets a little bit better. So my question is, this is a large project, there's lots of money going into this, it makes everybody nervous, you know, to, to go into a large project like this, though needed, though recommended, and this council has approved that work, the public needs to be continually made aware of what the progress is on this. Much like what we're doing on the Fifth Street Bridge, there is memorialized events that are going on, whether it's done through still or, or video or actual feeds onto a website. In a project like this, absent the odor, it, it would be highly recommended that somehow we memorialize this and keep the public abreast of, of each one of those steps. So, you know, residents in the, in that immediate area, and then the rest of the, of the residents in Uba City can see what the progress looks like, and certainly, this is their facility. As much as we want to disown this one and, and embrace all the other ones, this, this is our facility as residents, and, and I think we need to be proud of the fact that we're able to do this and don't have to go through a, a third-party provider, and that facility's been there since, and operational since about 1967, somewhere in that area. So, I, my recommendation would be somehow, even through the, you know, efforts and help of the contractor, that maybe we can continue to memorialize the efforts that are being made on an ongoing basis and, and make those available to the public.
Absolutely, staff will do that, thank you.
Any other comments or questions or a motion?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, the wastewater treatment facility improvement, staff's recommendation, A, rejecting the bid for Ara and Company, and then B, C, and D, awarding the professional services and contract, and then E, the transfer of funds to the appropriate...
I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on...
Congratulations.
...items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on the items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments that are controversial may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of a group. Is there anybody who would like to speak? No, do we have any written requests?
None received.
Okay. So we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council, staff, or public request particular items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have a motion?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Make motion for consent calendar, item 11 and 12.
Right, do we have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. On down to general items, we have a revision of the First Time Home Buyer Program Guidelines and Single Family Housing Rehabilitation Program Guidelines.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Department. The item before you is a request to, to consolidate five existing guidelines for three different housing programs that the city in partnership with the Regional Housing Authority offers into two sets of guidelines consistent with, with some recent updates at the state level. So historically, the city has received home funds, Calhome funds and community block development grants, and as part of those, the city has some discretion in terms of how those funds are used. The home funds and the Calhome funds are a little bit more limited, those are primarily for, for low-income first-time home buyers or for low-income homeowners that would like a loan to make improvements to the home at, at a reduced interest rate. So historically, in terms of the first-time home buyer programs over the past couple of years, this is going back to when we began our, our partnership with the Housing Authority about two and a half years ago, we've averaged between four and five loans a year, and in terms of the rehab program, we've averaged between three and four home loans a year. And then those are paid back to the city within 30 years at 3% interest in, under both conditions. So at the state level, HAD specifically, they had recently made some recommendations in terms of the templates, every jurisdiction should have a set of guidelines that it adopts. Again, it has a little bit of flexibility, but a lot of it's stipulated by the state. However, again, because there are three, three varying buckets of funds, we are trying to consolidate them so, so they're a little bit easier to understand from the community level, and at the same time, they're a bit easier to understand at the staff level. So we, so when we're talking about the guidelines, there's a common understanding, and they're pretty straightforward. So with that being said, staff is also recommending that the city update its guidelines. So in terms of the first-time home buyer program, the guidelines that staff is proposing that the applicant may not earn more than, than 80% of the median income, you are required to have a minimum of 3% down, the maximum loan amount would be $75,000 for the home program and $60,000 for the Calhome program, that's being increased in comparison to what exists today, because obviously, the cost of housing is slightly higher today than it was maybe four or five years ago. And then also, again, loans do have to be paid back in 30 years at 3% interest, the maximum purchase price is $242,000 in ter, in terms of the first-time home buyer program. In terms of the rehab program, the applicant must earn no more than 80% of the median income, very similar to, to the first-time home buyer program, the cap would be $75,000 for a home loan, $60,000 for, for, for the Calhome, and after the improvements are made, the home cannot be valued at more than $242,000. That's just a broad overview, there's, there's obviously a handful of additional details in the 40-plus pages that, that you're provided per sets of guidelines. In terms of fiscal impact to the city, it's actually none. Both the Housing Authority and city staff are paid through, to administer the programs through the different pockets or through the different buckets of money. So whenever we are administering the programs, there's some set aside funds, we obviously try not to use those up because the goal of the program is to make sure that we're providing those funds to, to people that are in need of, of the assistance. So with that being said, staff is recommending that the City Council this evening approve the revised guidelines for both the city's first-time home buyer program and the single-family housing rehab program. And again, it primarily consolidates five different sets of guidelines into two. So with that being said, that concludes staff's presentation, and here this evening is our partner agency, the Housing Authority, they have a couple of members here who probably can provide you in-depth details on the various guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Council have any questions at this time?
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you. By the way, good to see you, Gus, Becky, a long-time relationship working with you at the Housing Authority for quite a few years. It's great to see that you're progressing and doing so well for our communities and the others that you'll serve throughout Northern California. But the one thing that I noticed when reading this is that there is no longer the ability for sweat equity to be involved in these programs, is that, is that accurate?
Correct, that would be correct.
Yes, it looked like they'd eliminated that.
And that would be correct, so that would be removed, if I recall, I believe it was on page three of the staff report.
But I did see that, and I, because I know that before I was even ever thinking of becoming elected or any of involved in government, we utilized one of the programs with my son, and it was sweat equity, and it was about 95%, of course dad's sweat equity, trying to help them out because they were young and they didn't know anything. I was in construction as a trade, so, you know, like any dad would do, they try to assist in any way that they can for their kids to get started on a, their first home, at least any, I hopefully, good dad. And so it's, this is a program that I know definitely helps people get their first homes, and then from there, they move up to the next one, open that up for somebody else. I mean, it's a good way to, for people to move forward on homeownership. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd like to move for approval, let's see, of the revised guidelines for the city's first-time home buyer program and single-family housing rehabilitation program.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you. Next we have Police Administration Staffing Modifications.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, I believe I'm the last item of the evening.
You are.
There was a lot more people when we started. The purpose of this staff report in front of you is to modify police staffing by adding a limited-term police lieutenant position and temporarily unfunding an administrative manager position. In addition to the, some background is, in addition to the police chief, the Police Administration includes an assistant chief, a police commander, two police lieutenants, an administrative manager, and an administrative assistant currently. The police administrative team oversees the entire police department operations, and each role is critical in its own entities. On July 23rd of this year, the administrative manager, Ms. Shauna Pavy, received military orders to active duty and is expected to be on active military duty for three years. The administrative manager oversees a police records, communications division in addition to being the public information officer, just to name a few of her critical duties. Last year, the police department utilized an additional lieutenant as a result of the administrative manager working temporarily for another department. The administrative manager transferred to the fire department for approximately a year, and in response, the police department appointed an interim police lieutenant in order to fill her, backfill her position and provide needed additional managerial support for the sworn peace officers. In 2014, the city commissioned the International City Managers Association to evaluate police operations. As a result of that, they presented a lot of different recommended, recommendations of how we should staff. One of those that we were not, we were able to meet most of the recommendations, one that we were not able to was the recommendation for an additional police lieutenant. Some of the duties that police lieutenant would have overseen was police training and internal affairs, which are two very, currently very hot topics, and with current legislation being passed and signed as late as two days ago by Governor Brown, it's going to create some additional burdens to all law enforcement agencies. The opportunity is available now to transition in an additional police lieutenant. This lieutenant will be instrumental in... This lieutenant will be instrumental in expanding critical areas of responsibility, including training for both sworn and non-s sworn police employees, police accountability, the ability to investigate complaints, make policy recommendations regarding police practices and conduct periodic audits. This additional police lieutenant allows the department to transition to this format with a minimal impact of the police department budget for a period of three years. The new lieutenant would assume the current administrative duties of the administrative manager while completing the necessary courses and education to update their practices in police internal affairs and training procedures. This lieutenant would supervise a new team of community policing members. This team would consist of current, the current two school resource officers and the community policing coordinator and potentially any personnel assignment assigned to temporary duties that deal with transient issues. So with that being said, staff recommends the following police administration staffing changes. The addition of a sworn full-time, limited-term police lieutenant position while unfunding the administrative manager position. The administrative manager plans to return to employment with the police department at the expiration of her current active duty leave. But she can extend from three years to five years also. The lieutenant position will be reevaluated upon the return of the administrative manager. Furthermore, we recommend hiring an additional officer to backfill for the lieutenant who will be promoted from the current sergeant's group. If this is approved, we would hire an additional officer to backfill for the promotion to the sergeant. The net increase would result in the sworn staff of the police department increasing from its current number of sixty-four to sixty-five. The fiscal impact would be nineteen thousand dollars approximately for this current year, two thousand eighteen nineteen. Twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven additional cost of benefits and salary for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty and forty thousand two hundred and sixteen for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The alternative is do not approve the recommendation and send back to staff for additional research. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Does council have any questions at this time?
Yeah, through the mayor.
Yeah.
So Chief, when she comes back three years from now, does that mean that someone's going to lose their job?
At that time, we would reevaluate the position.
Okay, so we, so you go from sixty-four, sixty-five and three years from now, we'll still be able, if she comes back, it'll be sixty-six or we'll be okay? She's not.
I'm sorry, Chief, I, just to reiterate what Chief's saying, so much can change in three years.
Okay.
I mean, it's just how the, we, and I've committed to Chief Landon that we would absolutely reevaluate in light of his needs at the time. Furthermore, whether we like it or not, the rate of attrition in our departments inclusive of the police department is such that we're always in a recruiting basis. Now, human resources, bless our hearts, is always looking to get to one hundred percent staffing in Chief's department. So it wouldn't, I would not anticipate in any way laying someone off. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I just hate to see we bring somebody into our, into our police department family and then three years from now, sorry, I just hate to see that.
No one will get laid off as a result of any of the action that the council will take tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor.
Any other, yes.
Chief, I appreciate the fact that, that the ICMA recommendations that have been made in the past that have been, for the greater part, have, you've tried to model behind us. And one of the areas that was unable to be achieved was to put that platform of four lieutenants into position. I believe that just gives us a great opportunity for your department to be far more successful with its sworn staff in being able to provide the services to our community, whether it be through training, through all of the other efforts, especially through, as you mentioned, the internal affairs component of this and all of the other mandates that are thrown onto a department and are unfunded by the state of California. So, so I commend you for all of the efforts that you make, the staff makes to build and provide the highest level of service to our community. And it certainly was shown hours ago in front of us, the caliber officers that you produce through this agency and the efforts that you go through to hire the very, very best. Retention of those officers is highly important for us. And knowing that there's an attrition rate that will kick in, I certainly support this and would move staff's recommendation on this item.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you very much.
All right, we are down to business from city council. Council reports, Councilmember Buckland.
Attended Secog board meeting a week, week and a half ago. One of the areas that we're looking at for the rural communities and certainly applies directly to Yuba City is increasing our ag prosperity and how it can increase our local economy. This is an effort from the sixth county region. All of the participants are behind it. It's part of our RUCS program down at Secog, which is the rural urban connection. And those efforts are really being promoted. And there's going to be more effort by Secog to be involved and have meetings up in our area with staff, with city staff, with other members of our local jurisdictions in trying to make some efforts. The other efforts that are being worked on is, and they're currently taking applications for it, is the effort on our corridors to revitalize our, the corridors here in our area. And they want, they really want Yuba City and Marysville, Sutter County and Yuba County to work together, to put a team together, to build, to make a proposal where we can look at these. And I know that we have some local businesses and banking institutions and developers interested in that program also. So we need to continue to reach out and see if we can't put a team together on behalf of our region here, our northern part of the region. Also attended the mayor's cup. I can't say anymore about it. Yuba City may have won the game in an overwhelming manner. But it was, it was a well-fought, hardly, hard-fought game. And certainly would be an indicator that we have some great athletes from both of the schools in our presence when we're at those games. Went to the Yuba City Police Officers Association Pig Feed. Great event and they raised a fair amount of money and also presented equally a fair amount of money to different nonprofits in our community, which I thought was, was great. All from that event. The, also attended on behalf of Councilmember Cardoza, the By County Homeless Services Regional Team Meeting last Thursday. And part of that was to make recommendations for an allocation of approximately two point three million dollars to different portions of the homeless operations, nonprofits and all of the different organizations that are, that are involved in trying to, to work on the homeless issues. Also monies for Sutter County for their project up at nineteen sixty-five Live Oak Boulevard. And also commitment from Yuba City to look at assisting Sutter County somewhat in that effort, whether it be through our engineering or other services that we have. But also looking at, at some transitional housing opportunities possibly here in Yuba City. So with all of that said, that's the meetings that I had. And look forward to having a couple of days off and then getting right back to the meetings on Monday.
Great, thank you. We've got Councilmember Cardoza.
All right, let's start off meetings tonight. I attended the regional housing authority meeting and also our Yuba Sutter Transit Authority meeting. For chamber events, the last couple of weeks, we had two ribbon cuttings. Be youthful nail and skin lounge, I made a presentation there with Councilman Cleveland. And then also we had a presentation ribbon cutting for pristine house cleaning services. And that was with Councilman Cleveland and Vice Mayor Harris. We made a presentation. Attended the two forums sponsored by the Chamber and Bill Democrat. First one was the state assembly and the state senate candidates. And the second one was our Sutter County Superintendent Schools and also our Sutter County Supervisors District Three. For community and city events, I attended the Celebration of Heroes at Crossroads Church, celebrating the men and women in uniform with council. Attended the United Way Golden Autumn Wine Festival at Bishop's Pumpkin Farm. Had fun at the Calusa Casino Sixth Annual Celebrity Golf Tournament at Peachtree Country Club. Also attended the Pig Feed with council, the mayor's cup with council. And I had the honors of being interviewed by the Yuba City High School's American Government Class. Got asked, got asked some very interesting questions. And then also attended the Adventist Rite of Hospitals Meeting of the New Doctors and Hospital Staff. They had a meet and greet with all their new doctors and staff. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you. Starting off with Yuba Sutter Transit Authority, talking about some of the new buses that we have that are finally showing up, especially the ones that go to Sacramento and getting very popular again because they have wifi. And so as we're going down there, they max it out every day and every drive to where that wifi is really kicking in. So it's very attractive to them. So more of them are getting off the road and riding our transit down to Sacramento again. Was on the Feather River Air Quality Management District Meeting on this past Monday, dealing with our air quality, some of the reports on the effect of the fires in our community. And there's going to be some exceptions asked for, some applications. And so we're going to go through that process. But the whole, you know, Northern California is going to be having all the air quality districts on that. We're definitely getting one of the largest grants from the state regarding air quality and for people to convert their trucks and stuff and buy new vehicles that are compliant, which was to the credit of our, the staff there to be able to accomplish that. Because originally they wanted to give us like two hundred something thousand dollars and they fought back and says, you're not doing it right. And they ended up with way over two million dollars. So they did that very well, fighting for our area. Definitely went to the Community Heroes Event. And turns out my grandson, who is Civil Air Patrol, the, was there. He spoke at a little conference, mini-conference they had there with the, the C cadets, the ROTC, Air ROTC over at Lynn Hur School and with the Beal Composite Squadron, Civil Air Patrol. And they had a little mini-conference and he was one of the speakers at that conference. Let's see, attended, like it was on the picture there, I attended the ribbon cutting and dedication of the senior patio and courtyard upgrades, changes that was greatly needed. Yeah, since two thousand seven, when I first saw that, it was like, wow. And we were able to make it happen in the city. Yuba City Police Officers Association Pig Feed, that was great. To go there and also watch the money being raised. And then they giving it out to the needy causes and the great causes we have. I did attend the mayor's cup, was standing at the end of the goal as the first one was made by Yuba City. Ended up forty-something to twenty-something, I think it was. Yeah, numbers. I live across the street from Yuba City High School, so I have to, and my sons both graduated there, so I, I do, I am partial. Let's see, but I can say River Valley went out and did a number on the next one. So I think it was sixty-five to some low score for the, this last game they did. So they, they definitely went out and vengeance was theirs. And then I went to a band together for Christ event out at the church where they had some, actually very good bands and music out there, high quality. So that was pretty much it. I will be going to the LaFco Conference, local, anyway, formation, government, commission and be there for a couple of days and go through an election process there and maybe represent Northern California area on the state board, don't know yet, but I'll be going through an election process there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris.
I too, attended Celebration Heroes Event at Crossroads Church. It's a wonderful event, seems to be getting bigger and bigger every year. They have a very outstanding program. It's a great opportunity to come together and honor all those folks. The mini-conference you speak of, Stan, is the, is a youth leadership forum. We worked together with Lieutenant Colonel Darrell Dunn from the Civil Air Patrol. We invited not only the folks that were present, we invited several others for various reasons they were unable to attend. But the intent behind that was we wanted to reach out to other youth groups in the community and give an opportunity for young people who have already made a proactive effort to become future leaders. And that would be the military groups that came in, also law enforcement explorer posts and whatnot. And essentially give them some pep talk about leaderships, where we have been, where we, what works for us, what hasn't worked for us. Mayor Diball was kind enough to speak and kind of be the, kind of the host of the event. And we got a lot of positive feedback at the end. And we also provided, like I said, networking opportunities for those folks. They signed the roster and so hopefully can kind of, the folks that are especially interested in continuing and having, taking some next steps towards networking for their future, we'd be happy to provide that. Harvest Arts Events at a higher ranch out in the Buttes as part of the role at the Yuba Sutter Arts Board. I believe, we haven't got the numbers yet, but I believe it was a record year as far as fundraising. Several, many, many people, probably at least a couple hundred folks attended that. It's always a good time. Between the, there's always a raffle, of course, we all know that, enjoy raffles and silent auctions. But I believe it was at least twenty local artists came out and set up booths and set up their wares and we got to enjoy their, their products. And also, as was stated, I also attended the Pig Feed for the POA, which is always a good time. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And some of the same items, the mayor's cup. It was a great evening, great game. I have to kind of be right in the middle because I'm a honker and my daughter's a falcon, so I'm not going to take sides. They all fly. During her volleyball games, it was negotiating whether I'm going to wear a brown shirt or a green shirt. So we're just not going to go there. I had the honor to speak at the Celebration of Heroes Event, just honoring all those in service veterans who have passed as well. The youth leadership program, thank you to Vice Mayor Harris and Lieutenant Dunn who took the initiative to put that together. So really appreciate that. And hopefully they'll continue to grow, yes. And lots of interviews with the high school students. They have this project that is due, I believe, November second. So I, I'm pretty much in interviews with them almost every night this last week. So, but it's a great group and great conversation and they're eager to learn. And so that's, can't knock that, that's awesome, awesome way for the teachers to really get them involved. Aside from that, next week I will be in Brooklyn with the Sacramento Metro Chamber Study Mission. And those, we will be looking at various ways, innovative ways of how to build your city and bring in jobs and be creative with what we have for the entire region. So we'll see what kind of ideas we bring back as a region and we will share that with a complete report. Aside from that, I don't think there's anything else. We're going to call it a night, adjourned eight-thirty.